Okay, good evening. Welcome to the Town of Auburn Zoning Board of Appeals meeting for Thursday, August 21st, 2014. A little housekeeping issues first. I just want to let everybody know that's present that the meeting will be recorded and will be replayed on the local access. And I also have to ask if anybody is recording the meeting here this evening?
Motion to open?
Hearing none, seeing none. Do I have a motion to open?
Motion to open here?
We make the...
Make a motion to open the hearing?
Motion to open here.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So we have a hearing at 7 o'clock. The applicant, Mr. Stephen Knott of 90 Elmwood Street, requesting a variance under Section 5.4 Table 1 of the Auburn zoning bylaws for the construction of a retaining wall along Gibson Road, Auburn, Mass., Map 12 Parcel 117. Mr. Knott, if you could approach the podium, please, sir? If you could introduce yourself with a record and give your address and...
Hi, everybody. I'm Stephen Knott, and I live at 90 Elmwood Street. And I'm here to basically ask for a variance for a retaining wall tonight on my property. It's going to be a 156-foot wall. 102 feet of the wall will be along, adjacent to my house, along Gibson Road. And 54 feet of the wall will be coming in between the 166 Hampton Street property and my property. Basically, the wall is about, on an average, about eight and a half feet high along Gibson Road. That's going to be one consistent level all the way down from the front of the wall to the back of the wall. And when we get to the corner and start going up in between the properties, we're going to start building back into the grade to level the whole area out in the back of the house. The wall's going to be built out of two-foot by two-foot by six-foot stamped concrete blocks from Dauphine's Concrete. I have a picture and a little package I put together for my engineer, you guys. I'm bringing up...
Yes, please.
They're locking concrete blocks. There's some pictures in there. There's a mix where you can have... They're stamped stone-based concrete blocks. And basically, the reason behind this whole deal is I'm on that side of my house, adjacent to Gibson Road. For the past eight years, I've been losing grade on that side of the house. There was an existing stone wall that was put up there and then buried. That stone wall has now moved probably about a foot and a half to two feet over the easement line, and which everything behind the wall, soil, grade, everything is now eroding down behind it. There are some pictures in the package of the brief that I gave to you guys. You can see that there is a different color of brick. My house is brick. And there's a couple lines of red brick underneath the brown brick, and that's essentially where my grade was about five to six years ago. It's now eroding down the hill and can't seem to stop it. My back patio is also now probably about three inches above the grade, which is also on that side of my house, adjacent to Gibson Road. So that whole side is going down the hill, and now that they're improving the road down there and doing some other things, it seems to be going a little bit faster these days. But basically, there's going to be a fence on top of the wall going around the back. It's going to be a six-foot fence around the backside going along Gibson Road. And then there's going to be a four-foot fence halfway down the wall, 102-foot side along Gibson Road, just for safety reasons and looks, things like that. Basically, my engineer is currently working on it. I was hoping to have prints for you tonight, but he wasn't able to get them to me. He's currently working on it. He should be done within the next couple days or so. He said he would be done tonight, but fortunately, I don't have the engineered prints from you. John Reel is doing the engineering of it, and the survey and the topography was done by H.S. and T. Engineering Firm. So I don't know if you want me to get into the details behind everything, or you just want to ask the certain questions that you guys want to ask, or, you know, how you want to... if you have any questions.
Okay. Well, as a point of order, I just want to let everyone know that Ms. Roach is going to be here late this evening. So for the time being, I'd like to ask that Mr. Natoli serve as a full voting member for the time being. So before we move forward, what I'd like to do is kind of just offer the members opportunities, starting with Mr. Cussy. Do you have any questions for the homeowner?
I don't.
Okay.
I'm pleased that an engineer is involved.
Mm-hmm.
And it looks to me to be a quality wall.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Mr. Natoli?
This, the wall that's being built, just on the construction end, is it going to have the fabric behind it, you know, as you got the cinch and you go...
Yep, we're doing GeoGrid at two levels. It's going to be at the second tier and the third tier. They're going to go back the appropriate...
Right, so many feet.
Whatever the specifications from the GeoGrid call for. They're going to go back that far, and then we're also going to re-rod stake them, not just lay them into the grade, so to speak, because usually you just lay stone on top of it, and the weight of the bill and everything you put behind the wall holds the GeoGrid in place. We're going to do a little extra step, and we're also going to re-rod the GeoGrid, rebar straight down in through the GeoGrid to hold it in place even as an extra security.
And is it going to be right at the property line?
Well, along Gibson Road, I've got a, there's a 20-foot easement off of Gibson Road, and then the 10-foot setback basically brings where I can put the wall six inches away from my house. So it's going to be probably about six inches behind the easement on 102, on Gibson Road. And then when it comes up between the two properties, I think it's six feet I have to start from the actual property line to make the correct 90-degree corner to match up with the 54 feet that comes up to the end to still be on my property and not go on to theirs. So it'll be over the setback lines, but it won't encroach on their property at all.
Just a clarification on the, maybe the building inspector, what exactly is the relief that we're looking for here?
The relief that I'm seeing is that it is right to Gibson Road, right on the property line. Steve, the easement that you speak of is, can you talk to that a little bit?
Well, the Gibson Road is, I think it was a private road at one time. It is now a public road. So for road improvements, there's a 20-foot, actually, yeah, it's a 20-foot from the edge of the road easement that the town has for road improvements. So basically, you don't want to put any solid structures over that easement.
So that 20-foot easement's from the center line of Gibson Road back to the property?
Is it the center line? The center line?
Yeah. Pretty sure. And it's a private road still, but the other side of Gibson's being developed.
Okay. And then I guess to the chair, I need, we need a clarification on the, if this is a structure, or, because anything over eight feet is considered a structure?
Right. So a clarification on that. The actual bylaw that he's seeking relief is 5.3.1.
Correct.
That's what I thought as well.
Which is the fact that we have a wall that's going to be larger than eight feet, and then he's going to have guard protection on top of that with a fence, meeting the building code requirements for that.
So we're looking for setback, and we're looking for 3.1. Again, anything over eight is usually, is considered a structure, so we need something to say on that.
Correct.
Okay. Anything else? Mr. Natoli? Okay. Mr. Chickalow?
Thank you. Through the chair, the height of this wall, will that bring eight to 10 feet? Will that bring it with the grade, excuse me, that currently matches the very, very short level piece of grade that you have right beside the house? And when I say very short, I'm talking about 12 inches.
Yes, essentially.
Okay. That will bring it even with that grade, then? So you're not going above it or anything like that?
Oh, no, no.
And once you're at that grade, you will fill, and you will fill that area?
The area on the Gibson side or the...
The area from...
Or behind it.
The area from your house to the wall?
Yep, we're going to fill it.
Okay.
Fill it off and make it all level.
Okay. And that'll be with properly engineered gravel, stone?
Yep. Yep, we have a, the part of the engineering is a drainage, engineered drainage spec to go with the wall that'll drain all the gutters from the house and everything that, to go with, basically, the pitch of the land.
And will that drain too?
Well, he's gonna, I think he's going to drain it down, I'm not sure, but I think he's going to drain it down and dig a, well, it's going to drain out the front of the wall. There's going to be four or five four-inch pipes that drain out the front of the wall on the Gibson side of the wall that's going to carry all the drainage behind the wall and the drainage from my gutters. It's all going to be tied into one and go out.
You'll be directing water from your gutters and your property onto Gibson Road?
No, there's going to be a drywall at the end of the wall where it's going to be sunk into a drywall is what my engineer said.
And that, do you have any approximate dimensions of that drywall?
No, he's, the engineer is going to give me that, those dimensions.
Okay. Once, once you've, if everything is granted, once you've filled this area, plan to put a fence on top of that, and how high?
Excuse me?
How high will that fence be?
The fence on the backside, it'll come down the 54 feet on the backside, and then about 50 feet on the long side of the wall, it's going to be six-foot fence. The rest of the 50-foot is going to kind of tier down to a four-foot fence.
And taper into Elmwood?
No, it doesn't go, it's, I'm stopping it basically right at the front of my house. It won't go past the, the wall doesn't go past the front of my house.
Okay.
So 102 feet basically lines it up about five feet back from the front of my house if you're looking at it from Elmwood Street.
Okay.
Anything else?
I'll say thank you.
Okay. Mr. Maron?
I thank you through the, through the chair. So, Mr. Knott, the request for variance and relief would include the height plus the height of the fence, correct?
Let me clarify that, because it's a great question. The fence is getting, it's not behind the retaining wall, it's actually getting drilled into the top of the retaining wall and a poacher in.
Yes, structurally into the wall.
So I think you hit on a good point. I think the relief being sought is for the entire structure of the retaining wall plus the guard fence at the top. So that guard fence, Steve's six feet?
Six feet around the back and four feet halfway down the side.
And you're losing me a little bit with that, as far as the, what's side and what's back?
This is the back over here.
Okay.
Along the two property lines here, this is 166 Hampton over here.
Okay. So that's where the six-foot fence would be?
The six-foot will come all the way down, wrap around to the edge of the patio here.
Okay.
And then it'll go down to a four-foot fence down this side.
I don't know if you want to point that out to those...
Yep. The backside is essentially, this part is 166 Hampton is right here. And the six-foot fence will come all the way down to the patio right here, and then it'll drop down to a four-foot fence continuing to the front.
Guard protection, just as a side note through the chair, it's a three-foot minimum for guard protection at the top of that retaining wall. And then Steve had come to the building department prior when we requested a variance, and that wall system with the weep holes and the system that he's proposing is all going to have oversight by an engineer for that design of that system. And it includes everything, the GeoGrid, like he said, it's all part of a stamped engineered design through building code. Once we, the closer we reach 10 feet in height, we need to have, it's an automatic engineered system. And so we've requested, because we came so close to that, that be done, and Steve's been complying with that.
That's really helpful to note. And so just one final point, Mr. Chairman. So if, if, if there's an opportunity and this is approved, with a condition, I'd like to add, and I know we're not there yet, but if we go there, I'd like to explore a little bit about what we want to ask for the specifications and confirmations around the drywall and how that's designed specifically for runoff. And then if there's any perpetual maintenance on that, check up some maintenance for certain intervals to make sure that's draining properly.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'd just like to add that I walked the property with the property owner, and you can clearly see that there has been some erosion issues, excuse me, there, along with some recent construction that is not related to his property that is having an effect over there. So I think regardless of how we come to a conclusion, I think it would be important to sort of give the homeowner some relief in this situation. And I'd like to just add that for a variance, so you're fully aware, I'm going to read the paragraph right from our bylaws, is 9.5.5 mandatory findings. So before the grant of any variance from the requirements of this bylaw, the Board of Appeals must specifically find that, one, owing to circumstances related to the soil conditions, shape, or topography of the land or structures, and specifically affecting soil, land, or structures, but not affecting generally the zoning district in which it is located. A literal enforcement of the provision of this bylaw would include substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, and, two, that desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of the bylaw. So there are certain criteria that we have to make sure that you meet before we can grant you a variance, and that, basically, that paragraph outlines that. So in my humble opinion, I think that we have an issue with the land and structures, the soil conditions, the shape and topography, all send to fit. I think also with the erosion issues he has going on over there. And I also see that there is a financial hardship in the event that we don't grant some type of relief, that this could have a serious negative effect on his property in the long term as well. So with that being said, do we have anything else? Okay.
And just, just going to throw this out there, because the only issue I would have would be, this is private at this point.
Mm-hmm.
And I don't know if the town is thinking of taking over this road. If the town takes over this road, we have a structure now that's built on the town road property and within the easement.
It's behind the easement.
It's within the easement will go to the town if they're going to take over the road. So my only, I just don't know how that's going to work with a 10-foot structure or retaining wall being within that if the town takes it over.
Through the chair, on the plan, the walls behind the 20-foot easement?
Mm-hmm.
And on his property, not with, not on the easement?
So the road that we, that I went there to see, that road, is that in the, is the road itself in the easement, or is...
Yeah, the road itself is made up of the easement.
So...
That area.
I wish we, I can't see the, really see the dimensions. What's the dimensions from, because there's a cliff on the other side of that road.
Yeah.
It doesn't look to be more than 16 feet between width.
If you look at the, on hit, the plan that Mr. Knott submitted, there's a 20-foot easement indication on the left hand end, right at the, just off the 90-degree corner in the retaining wall.
Yeah, do you have a bigger one? This is really small. No, go there, but...
My understanding is that the 20 feet, when it's a private road, it's the access on, or the lots on either side.
Yeah, as long as, if it's a private road, you go to the center, the ones that people own that and this.
Yeah.
But is it going to be a public road at any point?
The, I, the only thing I can answer with regards to that, I've had conversations with Bill Coyle, the town engineer, because of the construction going on on the other side of the lot, and the request has been made to that gentleman when he develops out Gibson Road to provide a road improvement plan and get approval. The classification of that road after, I'm not 100% familiar with it as far as, because I think there is a classification where it still remains somewhat private, it doesn't get handed over to the town, but still Bill Coyle and DPW is, would be required to maintain it.
Yeah, until town meeting accepts it. But I just didn't know if, would that be part that gets accepted by the town at that point? And then is the town going to be liable if we accept the road for the maintenance of the wall?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, through, my understanding of, and my interpretation of this, Mr. Natoli, is that the wall is not set within the easement. The 20-foot easement is before it, and the wall is set beyond the easement. So in the event that the town would ratify and take over ownership of this road, the wall would never be within the easement that the town would then take control of. So I would interpret that, that this wall would always be retained, owned by the owner and maintained by the owner, and it would never encroach on the 20-foot easement. And if I'm interpreting these drawings in that fashion, that's my understanding.
Six inches behind, the face of the wall is six inches behind the easement.
And that's how I, that's how I read that. Thank you very much for this.
That would might be helpful.
Thank you.
Okay. Great, thank you. Okay, do we have any further discussion on that matter?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
Make a motion to grant the variance based upon relief from the two previously discussed issues of height and six-inch setback that you were referring to, and the six inches of setback area that you were referring to.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, seeing none? Okay, can I have a motion to close the hearing? Oh, sorry, let me take that back. Do we have any conditions that we'd like to include?
So, Mr. Chairman, I, if I may, I'd like to add a condition just that to the, to the drywall, and feel free to help articulate this. But what I'd like to do is just make a condition that the drywall that he speaks of, that when that's designed, that that be submitted for design through the engineer, so that if there is any maintenance, that it is, and we just have a clear understanding of where that drainage is going.
Okay.
And how that's designed through the drywall, and then if there's any maintenance to it.
So I believe the permit wouldn't be able to be granted regardless without the completed plans being submitted to the code enforcement department? So I think the easiest way to say that is that all required provisions be met prior to the permit being issued from the code enforcement department?
That certainly, this certainly satisfies my...
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Chickalow?
No, I was just saying that you have the two conditions that, of my motion.
Okay.
If you, just also subject to the, to the plan presented to the board, probably should make note of the plan number just for location.
Okay.
And everything as to a plan.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, congratulations. Good luck.
Thank you very much. Really appreciate it. And I'll get those prints over to you as soon as I can.
Thank you. Thank you.
Got a motion to close the hearing?
Motion to close the hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So the next order of business we have to do is finish our reorganization from last month. So do I have a motion to open for the purpose of reorganization?
Motion to open for the purpose of reorganization?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
So we have to elect a vice chair. Do I have any motions for a vice chair?
Make a motion for Mike Maron for vice chair.
Only if we had a motion at the last meeting.
We did already? Okay, I apologize. Can you refresh my memory on that?
Rich made the motion.
Okay.
For Dennis.
Okay.
There was a question because he is an alternate.
Yes.
Whether he could become vice chair.
Right. On clarification purposes, I was told no. Alternates cannot be brought to the vice chair position.
Who told you that, by the way? Just for clarification.
I had a meeting with the town manager.
Okay. Did she reference any particular...
Off the top of my head, I couldn't tell you. No, not right now. But I was told that alternates cannot be made vice chair.
Okay, I just didn't know any, where she got that from, just to, in case...
I can look into it and find out.
If it's written anywhere, I'd like to see it, if that's okay.
Okay. So with that being said...
Do we have a motion now?
Okay.
On the floor, for Mike Maron as vice chair.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any other nominations?
You looking for more nominations?
Well, I think we can have the right to other nominations, correct?
I'd like to name Rich, because he's...
Point of order, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir. And I apologize if I'm out of order. I'm trying to learn this business as best as possible.
Quite all right. Point of order would be the motion made by an alternate.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay.
There's no, there's no, there's no statute that you, that relates to any of this. There's no statute that relates to alternates voting for officers. There's, there's...
Point of order made would be the motion made by a alternate who's a non-voting member.
Voting members on this part, there's only voting members on...
Voting members of this board are five.
No, no, as far as the office, it's determined by a, either a statute or something in the town that has written criteria for that. It's not written in state. This is a state authorized board. There's nothing in that that says alternates. There are many towns, alternates do vote on officers.
This is one of the towns that alternates do not vote in.
Where did you hear that from?
We are a five-member voting board.
No, I'm talking about, no, I'm talking about five-member...
Mr. Natoli, I'm asking, I'm answering your question.
No, but you don't have...
We were voted in and appointed by the Board of Selectmen. We were appointed as voting members, full voting members or alternates.
Correct. On issues of variances and special permits and things like that, on organization, and there's many towns that have five voting members, because that's what it is, and alternates will alternates vote. It's, it's a, it's a structure of the town's criteria or ordinance, which we don't have one.
Well, I think what we've had is clarification from the town manager.
Who has no authority...
And I know you may be saying it may be that, but our chairman has had a meeting with the town manager.
Well, I want to be clear that the Board of Selectmen is the appointing authority.
That is correct.
And I sought clarification simply for that purposes. So it technically is the Board of Selectmen who is the granting authority in this case.
Correct.
So I think we would be best advised to revisit the issue through the Board of Selectmen for clarification.
Should that be the case, then I will withdraw my motion until further clarification, and we will operate without a vice chairman.
And certainly, we can, we can have an answer before the next meeting. I'm confident of that.
That would be preferable.
I'll try to get it on the agenda for the selectmen's meeting as long as it's posted long enough, and we have a public hearing on it. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, so after last meeting, I actually did, as, as one of the newest members, did seek some advice from our appointing authority.
Okay.
And went to Ms. Goodrich, the head of the Board of Selectmen. And she confirmed for me, albeit verbal, she confirmed for me the statements being made by Mr. Chickalow. So the, I think that based on the confusion and the challenge on this board before we go forward, I would request that we seek her counsel directly in the Board of Selectmen's counsel and perhaps get written discussion confirmed around this issue, whether or not it's to invite her to our next meeting or to have an executive session, if that's appropriate, with her to seek clarification and get this in minutes and in writing, so that there's no further debate or challenge to this issue.
Okay, so I think my intention as chair would be to have a professional and courteous conversation with all parties concerned to find out what our best way to move forward with this issue is and seek clarification. But I don't think it would be appropriate to have an executive session. I think it would be required of us to have a public hearing. So, but I'm going to seek that out, because again, this is my first meeting as chair. I'm kind of opening canned worms here. So I'd like to make sure that we follow everything in terms of ethical guidelines. So I'd like to make sure that we follow everything in terms of ethical guidelines, regulations, rules, so we're gonna make sure we get to the bottom of it and make sure that we do it correctly and legally.
And, and I appreciate your comments and response, that, that I wouldn't suggest an executive session, uh, that it would be off protocol or procedure. If it needs to be an open session, I would welcome that as well.
And if it is in fact an open session, we'll have the minutes that will, will stand for the record as well.
Agreed. But, but I think that the, the correct approach is to go to our appointing authority,
Mm-hmm.
uh, for affirmation, uh, for next steps. Put the organization piece aside so that we can carry on the business of the board.
Okay. So as you can see, his new chair, I'm gonna have some, uh, hiccups in the road here. And, uh, I'll do my best to work those things out.
Yes, no.
And I, and I, as a further thought, I think you might wanna, uh, actually get, uh, advice from legal counsel also.
Right. Yeah, I think we'll address all the issues.
Because that's where, again, this is a state mandating board.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, the selectmen appoint members, from that point on, there really is no other, there is no overseeing of the board at that point by the Board of Selectment. It's an autonomous board, it's meant to be an autonomous board in that. So with that, I would assume that we probably, since it's state mandated that, we get legal counsel on...
Right. I agree. Whichever, whichever appropriate course of action is what we'll take, and that'll be the best thing to do.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so we're gonna table that motion, is that correct, sir? You withdraw?
I will absolutely withdraw the motion until clarification.
Okay, great, thank you very much. Anyone else?
Chairman.
Do I have to make a motion to close that hearing?
That part of it?
That part of it, just this part of it.
Yeah, I don't think it's an actual hearing, it's part of a open hearing.
Okay.
So, um, we can prob, if you'd like, let, uh, have some more information on...
Well, that's what I was gonna suggest, do we have any other new business to discuss?
These are some of the things we talked about on the last one, I, I'll give just two for everyone here.
Pass them down?
Yeah, pass them down.
Do we have enough?
You have one, two, three?
I should have had more of them.
No, that's okay.
If anyone needed, these are just procedural things that were done, uh, there's two versions, actually. Uh, just when Adam was here, we're talking about even having something out for the people to see, so they know we're in the process
Mm-hmm.
and how the process works, and where they get to speak, and things like that. So the first one, uh, was just says conduct and procedure, that one was the original. And then there was another version that was done, do you have two? Okay. She's got two. It's okay, yeah. There's something just to go through and look over, and it's always a good idea to map on procedures.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Any input would be greatly appreciated.
And then also, as a side note, even for the, what we've just been going through, it's, um, the board can develop itself procedures on how to vote. So, you can look at that if you'd like, I can, uh, you can even look at other towns, I have copies of...
So we'd like to have the opportunity to maybe address these at the next meeting?
Sure, I mean, if you like, it's just, it's just a, a procedure, something basically for people in the audience, if you can get, as you know, quite, uh, crazy with, with, when you get, uh, with a lot of residents coming through, it's nice to have something they can look at and know where in the proceeding they, they get a chance to speak
Mm-hmm.
and how, how it goes.
Okay. Thank you very much. Do we have any other new business? I would like to, uh, post to the members of the boards for discussion, simply, purely academic discussion, of the possibility of beginning the process of an overlay district in the Route Twenty area that we have discussed in recent meetings. The overlay district in Route Twenty that we had discussed in recent meetings? I just wanted to put it out there for general discussion, purely academic, to see if there's any interest of the board to move forward with that.
That's great.
Mr. Cussy, do you have anything interesting there, or no?
Yeah, I think it's a great idea.
Okay.
We should definitely, uh, go ahead and make that, your motion to get that...
Okay. So possibly on the agenda for next meeting?
Yeah.
That would be, if the board sees fit?
Yeah.
To initiate discussions, sure.
Yeah, just for the purposes of discussion. Mr. Natoli?
Yeah, pushing this for years, it's...
I know, yeah.
It's something that needs to be done.
Okay.
The area's moving in that direction.
Look at the variance, isn't it?
Mr. Chiccolo, I see that you're already in agreement?
Yes, I am.
Mr. Roach?
In.
Okay. Mr. Maron, for the record?
Yes.
And Ms. Blaze?
Absolutely.
Okay. So I think, is this, uh, do I have a motion to put it on the agenda for the next meeting to begin the process?
Yeah.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so noted. Do I have a motion to close the hearing?
Motion to close the hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to close the meeting. One more, just to make sure I'm doing it right.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you very much, and I apologize for all the mistakes I made.
One thing? You're good.
Oh, we didn't go through the, um...
Minutes?
We didn't have any minutes.
These are actually... These are actually, we're gonna have to open the meeting again.
All right, make a motion to open, please. Second? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so we do have some administrative duties we have to do. So as you can see, instead of minutes, we have the, um, statement of facts from our last decisions. I did my best to be as accurate as possible with these, and I think you all have a copy in your package. In lieu of minutes, we're gonna use these to accept the documentation.
Now, I got, the email, was there going to be a, um, a rewrite of one? I think we got an email.
Yes.
The Polar one?
The Polar one was the final official...
Is that here?
Yep. You should've gotten it in your package.
That was, yeah.
The one in the package was the rewrite?
This is the correction, I believe, right?
No, I thought the email said...
No, the email said...
Oh, no, the email was the attachment.
The email is the attachment, disregard the one in the package.
Correct.
So this one is disregarded. So who printed the one from the email? Anybody?
I have it.
You do?
I left it in my, my records at home. I filed it, but...
What are the...
Okay.
It was really just the, uh, the substantial difference was what I, I did not write, uh, which members voted and what, in favor or against.
Okay.
And he basically just added that.
Okay.
Otherwise, the body of the information stayed the same.
If you wanna make one correction in there, it's, I think the original motion was to approve that didn't get the votes, correct? Am I recollecting?
Yes, that is correct. And I think that's what the correction stated.
Okay, that, that's what the correction stated?
Yes, that's what the correction stated, that...
I just wanted to make sure.
I wrote that it was denied in this, and it was actually that it was approved, but the voting members did not have enough votes.
Right.
And then it shows afterwards
Okay.
who voted in which way.
Okay. So we are signing.
Yeah, I'll highlight everything. And this is uncommon, just the... Maybe we got it?
I know.
Yeah, this is Polar. This is the new one or something?
Different, hold on.
The same one.
It's missing this part. Right, so that's there.
Still, what is it?
So that part's there, that's there, but then this is missing.
Thank you.
Yeah, but the, the decision itself?
Yeah, decision itself is right, three, two, yes, 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 no, no.
It was, uh, it was a motion to, how do you put this?
This, the one for Polar might not be the newest.
Guys wanna hold off on signing until a minute?
I mean, unless you, do you know for sure that you printed that last one that she, it looks actually the same as the one that came in the packet.
Except without the...
To deny the special permit, except, except for the, the board made the following findings of fact, the four findings of fact is missing from the one that you printed.
Yeah, the, um, the Sheila Conroy prints all these out, and I just facilitate getting them signed, so I don't...
So we don't know if it's that one or not?
What do you wanna do?
You wanna hold off?
We'll hold off on that one.
I mean, I probably have it on my email.
No, no, we'll hold off on it.
You want me to call it up? Okay. We'll give this one back to you then, and we'll hold off on that one?
Okay.
This one's good, right?
Yeah.
My signature's quick.
Yeah.
That's a, this, that's a good one. Is that from the other guy?
Yes.
Oh, okay, okay.
Mr. Chair, uh, this is something that you might wanna consider, um, timeline now is, is an issue. Um, we might wanna s, maybe sign it and then have it, you know, you might wanna check, have the proper pages put in. We're running a little late on, on timeline, only because we meet once a month. We have fourteen days since that, we're really past part of it. That's not fatal, but the, it's supposed to be within fourteen days. We're past that.
So you wanna sign it?
If we go another thirty days, we're gonna be past the hundred, I believe.
Mm-hmm.
Or close to it.
What's Sheila's last name? Conroy, right? Okay, hold on, I got it right here.
So there's an issue with just the timeline that, where it has to be brought in?
July seventeenth was meeting.
That is the new one.
Well, the problem is, on the day we make the decision, you have fourteen days to have the written in.
I actually have the new one on my email. Let me just do a quick comparison to see if we can... Board didn't think this was the correct written, okay. Discussion, discussion by board, town meeting. One member of the board used the sit-down sign as a comparison. Yep, that's all there, and then look on this one that she sent us, it doesn't have the...
Yeah, you need the, um, we can just, you can just add that page of...
In the back.
The criteria of the, of the...
Conditions. This still says deny.
I know.
Through the chair, the, um, there was a, I have a, um, writing from, um, Attorney Henigan's office, just in regards to clerical issues. And it just states that, uh, to correct an inadvertent or clerical error in the decision so that the record, record reflects its true intent, uh, can be done, uh, so long as that the correction does not constitute a reversal of conscious decision, um, does not grant relief different from originally sought.
So in other words, we can do it...
So if we sign it and she edits it, it's fine?
We can edit it, it's fine.
Coming back.
I got it right here.
Just so we don't get it in on the timeline. And through the chair, something that you might wanna consider, and we can find out if, um, if there's Wi-Fi in the building, if the board could have access, of course it is, with today's technology, if you have an iPad and to be able to look up things, even, even Google Maps and things during a hearing, if you wanna see something, it's, could be very helpful. So it might be whatever password for the town employees, I imagine you guys have passwords for Wi-Fi here? If we get one, you know, for the board? This way Megan doesn't have to use her...
That's my data plan.
Data plan.
This one, uh, you checked to sign, but you did it yourself?
Yes, I'm not on that one. Is that Wade? Yep. That's Wade.
Yeah. These are two signed ones to go back.
Just need signature on some advertising cards. Chair?
The chair.
Yeah, chair, very tempting.
Thank you, sir.
Yep.
Okay, just making sure.
Okay.
A lot of sign, signature sign.
That's it, to me, okay.
I think we're... So now we have a motion to close the hearing?
One more time.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.